I hereby call to order this Committee of the Whole meeting for Monday, June 3rd, 2024. The time is 8:14 a.m. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone.
Here.
John Sees ready. Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Allison Papless.
Here.
Amy Palin.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabebs.
Here.
I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the May 13th, 2024 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the May 13th, 2024 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Allison Papless.
Yes.
Amy Palin.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabebs. Erin Stone.
Yes. Motion carries. We are starting off with Facility Development Committee. Mrs. Kim.
Thank you. A short update will be provided related to the construction projects that are set to begin right after school is out for summer. These projects will occur at Ramona, McKenzie, Central, Wilmett Junior High, and High Crest. All are expected to be completed by mid-August. I don't, is Mr. Bultemeyer going to provide construction updates?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have someone from Nicholas and Associates walk us through stuff for the summer and looking ahead to the following summer. Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Mike Pickler with Nicholas and Associates. Let's see, to give a brief update on 2023, we have all the chillers running at all the schools. We're working through final test imbalance, which will happen once the kids are out of school and we can kind of work through the classroom areas that just need final test imbalance. At High Crest, we have that chiller running on temporary power. We have a switchboard changeout that is scheduled for the week of 6/10, as soon as the kids are out of school. That changeout will have about a three-week duration and we'll be providing additional temp power to allow for the summer programs that are scheduled in that school to still operate. So that'll round out the 2023 work. For the 2024 work that's upcoming, we plan to start all work at all four schools the week of 6/10 with a little bit of prep and mobilization starting Friday and Saturday prior. Let's see, at Central, we have the playground and sanitary work that's going to happen there, not playground, parking lot and sanitary work that'll happen there. And due to the nature of that work, we'll be closing down the playground and grass areas at that school just to allow us for access and safety for, you know, the public and construction crews. That duration is, we're expecting less than five weeks, so that will reopen relatively quickly and be accessible again to the kids and public. Let's see, both mechanical units, as we mentioned at the last meeting, are in hand for this year's work, so we don't expect any issues or delays there as we saw last year. And at the Wilmett Junior High School, we have, Riddiford is the roofing contractor. They're scheduled to do their removals starting on the week of 6/10. We've got a couple of phases during, on the roof, separate roof areas that are out there. And that is a large amount of roofing work that, you know, will take the entire summer, but Riddiford is geared up with their manpower and they expect to provide additional hours to complete that work, you know, on time. For the 2025 work, as you know, the early board approval there allowed us to get a jump on the process for 2025. We have the pre-purchase organized and submittals are already approved for that equipment for 2025. And Joe can give us a little more update on the budgeting process.
Thanks, Mike. Good morning.
Morning.
So with regards to the pre-purchase for the chiller for 2025, that design criteria was issued last month, middle of May. Like Mike mentioned, that's all been pulled together and back to the manufacturer's rep. So within the next two weeks, the chiller will be formally on order. So we're allowing about a year to receive it. So hopefully, we're in the same position next year that we are this year. So that's great. With regards to timeline, we're moving out of SDs into CDs. So our detailed, our first detailed budget will take place in July. So we have a 60% CD being issued later this month. We'll turn around that detailed budget in July and then the 85% will follow from August into September. Our out-to-bid right now is in September with a bid opening in October. So we're in great shape overall. Any questions with regards to 2025?
Can you remind me what CD and SD mean?
So schematic design, so we go from conceptual design, early design phase into schematic into construction documents. So 100% CDs are essentially the bid documents that go out for public bidding.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe and Mike. Next, we are looking at our five-year capital project summary. Twice a year, the five-year capital project summary is reviewed with the board. Since the last review in December, the board has approved summer 2024 project bids, design work for the Wilmett Junior High first-floor AC renovations has been authorized by the board. We are looking into a potential project that would see solar panels installed on portions of the roof. There are many moving pieces to a project like this and the plan would be to dig into the details in more depth at a future meeting if the financial aspect of the project looks reasonable. Later in the five-year plan summary, we have tentatively listed the renovation of 10 restrooms at High Crest.
Okay. All right, so I've shared an updated five-year summary. The, on the left-hand side, the two projects that I've highlighted in bold, the reason I did that is going back to our existing five-year strategic plan, those were the projects that have not been board-approved with bids yet, but they are ones that we had, you know, committed that we were going to accomplish. So you see at the bottom row, highlighted in yellow, that's the first-floor AC project. We're well, well into that design. And then middle of the top half section, the window replacement we have slated for the summer of '26. Still on track to pursue that project about a year from now. And then a couple other changes I just wanted to point out. So this fourth row where I have summer of '25, it's kind of a light pink color. So that is really just a placeholder for right now. What we're looking into, or at least the initial info, is promising enough that it's worthy of continuing to investigate is looking at doing some solar, adding some solar panels to the junior high. It fits in well with putting in the new roof this year, so the new roof will have a nice long life. Follow that up with potentially putting some solar panels on top, which the useful life are fairly similar. You know, the things that we're digging into are just, you know, can we do it with the roof, the economics of the project, and then what kind of constraints might exist, you know, related to putting solar panels on a roof within the community. So my hope is that as we start to firm up or check off some of those, we can either continue or we'll find out that it just, it might not be viable, but hopefully by the end of the summer, maybe August or September, I would be back asking the board for approval to start like incurring costs. Right now, we're really just exploring and, you know, at least the stuff I've seen so far, it shows enough economic promise that we should continue to pursue it. And then the summer '27, the reason I listed, that's another change, the High Crest restrooms. One of the reasons I put that on there, we do know that there's probably 10 to 12 restrooms at High Crest that we want to renovate. The reason I've kind of temporarily put them in here is if we go back to one of our constraints when it comes to doing construction projects, is that every summer, we need to leave either the junior high or High Crest available for our programming and for the park district. So with three consecutive summers of fairly large projects at the junior high, I just wanted to kind of slate that in. And at least those restrooms at High Crest, one of the things that, in talking with our own internal staff, is going back at least a couple decades when some of the original piping was removed, it was replaced with the extent, with the exception of leaving the piping that's in the bathrooms, since no one would be drinking from that, it's merely for washing hands or for the toilets. So as we look to renovate, and the age of those water pipes, it does become challenging for our maintenance staff to try and service those. So that's where we got that on there. And then as we work through things this summer and through the fall, we'll look to firm up some of the other projects that we might want to tackle in the latter half of this plan. And then one other thing that doesn't show up on here, but it's a noteworthy project that we're going to cover from that top line where it says "school-based capital projects", you know, that line item is where Pat and I work with the principals and try to, and the maintenance team identify a lot of smaller projects throughout the district. But one of the things that we're starting at a larger scale this summer is replacing all non-LED lighting with LED lighting. And the thing that Pat and I are excited about this project is the payback is considerably shorter because we're planning to use our own internal maintenance staff to accomplish it. So we'll start this summer and then as we're able to work with like building leadership, start to work through the classrooms even during the school year, this is something that probably will take us a couple of years to work on. So one of the things I wanted to mention to the board is, I don't want anyone to be surprised, likely in August, maybe September, buying the light fixtures to do the entire district, we would be exceeding purchasing code or bidding thresholds. So as we work through the summer, I plan to, you know, put a bid out for light fixtures. And so bids require board approval at a board meeting. So that's where I wanted the board to be aware and we'll have, as we get to that bid, we'll have more detail, more specific details on what is payback and the incentives. There's a, two ways that we're paying ourselves back on a project like that is ComEd also offers some nice incentives to replace the non-LED lighting with LED and then also they're just more efficient, so we'll, should save a sizable amount of money on electricity. So I'm happy to answer any questions. That's all I have for this particular topic.
Thanks, Corey. Does anybody have any questions?
It's like Amy does.
Very good question. So about the LED lighting, I understood you correctly, you implemented over the course of a few years or over a year, but it still makes sense to order them all together?
No, well, yeah, the, we will, we will likely end up doing multiple bids or we will try to structure where it's maybe a couple of bids over a couple of years. One of the constraints that we have is storage. So there's, I think, 28 fixtures, so like the ones you see up here, that's two feet by four feet, you can put about 28 on a wood pallet or skid. We have limited storage, so if we said, let's order all the fixtures for say a building or a couple of buildings, I'm not sure that we would have enough space, especially during the school year. So we will try to structure the bid in a way that allows for maybe multiple deliveries or, another option is, we are, District 39 is a member of multiple purchasing cooperatives. And so one of the ways to buy good services without going through a public bid is purchasing from a vendor that has an approved contract through there. We have, we do many things like that currently. LED lighting is not as common as some of the other supplies that are commonly used within schools. That may be an option, but yeah, we will probably have multiple bids or purchases with deliveries just from a storage standpoint.
Bonnie, I don't know if you can tell, it looks like no one else has any questions or comments. Is that true? Okay, was that all for facilities, Mrs. Kim?
Yes, thanks.
Thank you so much. And then I think we're moving on to school finance. Our valued friends who help us out with facilities, thank you for the doughnuts and hope you have a lovely day. Thank you for being here. For school finance, I am turning this over to Mr. Bultemeyer.
All right, so the first item up is District 39 Fiscal Year '25 Tentative Budget. So we reviewed this in detail a month ago. I don't intend to like walk through it again. Nothing has changed. I just merely want to remind the board that next Monday night, we'll be asking the board to approve the tentative budget, which is a procedural step, and then that budget will be on display throughout the summer, coming back towards our August meetings. Similar to prior years, there will likely be many, many individual budget changes and then we'll provide the board a detailed list of those changes from our initial tentative budget through our final budget. So I'll answer any questions if anyone has anything.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay.
All right. The next item is Wixie's Fiscal Year '25 Tentative Budget. So Wixie's tentative budget for 2025, we're looking at an estimate of $226,000 in revenues and expenditures. Wixie has historically had revenues equal expenditures with no fund balance. And similarly, we'll ask the board to tentatively approve that next Monday and then it'll be on display and then we'll finalize it alongside the D-39 budget in August. Any questions?
Board members, any questions, comments? Okay.
All right. So the last item is, so it looks like there's a lot, but it's just a lot of smaller items that we do what we do every June. So at the end of the fiscal year, getting ready for the up, the new fiscal year, there's a few things that we just are required to do. The first item is renewing our treasurer's bond. So each school district is required to have a treasurer's bond on the designated D-39 treasurer, which is me. So the board is required to approve that annually. The second item is the Capital Projects Fund is the fund that we pay the construction contractors directly from, however, it has no direct funding source on an annual basis. So we transfer money from operations and maintenance to capital projects. There's a resolution for the board to approve each year related to that, to that transfer. Then there's another inter-fund transfer that we're planning to do in fiscal year '25. That is from the educational fund, so the operation and maintenance fund. That one is for up to $1.5 million. This is more, in case the O&amp;M fund were to run out of money, we would transfer money from O&amp;M. We have done this, done this type of transfer many times in the past. The fourth item on the list is a potential resolution for a potential inter-fund loan between the Ed Fund and the O&amp;M Fund. One of the things to keep in mind is that we have seen property taxes for that second installment sometimes show up late, which means the O&amp;M Fund isn't receiving the bulk, you know, roughly half of their revenue, half of that fund's revenue. And a lot of the money that is transferred from O&amp;M to capital projects occurs early in the fiscal year. So there can always be the, a potential where we might need to have the Ed Fund loan, the O&amp;M Fund some funds on a temporary basis. So the loan would be not to exceed $2.5 million. That is a similar potential loan amount that we've had in prior years. And then the last item is, because we do not have a board meeting over the summer in the month of July, there's a be a resolution for the payment of accounts payable invoices for that roughly two-month period from our June 10th board meeting to the August 26th meeting. That is something also that we have historically done to provide that authorization, allow us to pay those invoices and keep things on time. I'm happy to answer any questions on any of those, but they'll all be included in the board packet for next Monday.
Board members, any questions, comments? Okay, thank you. We are moving on to strategy. Mrs. Schneider-Fabebs.
Thank you, yes. We, you know, at the end of the school year, we have a lot to report on and so we have some celebrations and some opportunities as well. We will start off with our spring assessment report and Katie Lee will provide that to us.
Actually, it'll be Kristin Swanson and I on behalf of all the administrators. So let me share my screen. And we will begin with Ames Webb.
So earlier this year, we talked about how we had changed some of the earliest literacy subtests for our kindergarten and first graders to better identify students who might need intervention as well as make sure that it's more developmentally in line with what our kindergartners and first graders are learning. So I have just a list of what we're currently doing in terms of both early literacy and early numeracy for Ames Webb. These are our benchmark assessments that we do three times a year, fall, winter, and So here we have the changes. So previously, we did letter naming fluency, letter word sound fluency for our kindergartners all three times. And this year, we changed it a little bit so that we started with the letter naming fluency and letter word sound fluency for fall and winter, but we also added in phoneme segmentation during the winter, which is really the ability to break words down into their basic parts. And then for spring, we have seen that letter naming fluency wasn't giving us the same need for information because our students were sort of past that. So we kept letter word sound fluency and phoneme segmentation and we added in nonsense word fluency, which is really the ability to start to apply those decoding skills for students. In terms of our first graders, we continued with oral reading fluency, which is the ability to read words in a short passage, but we also added in that nonsense word fluency because we wanted to continue to look at that decoding piece and make sure that our students were developing the phonemic awareness and decoding skills that they needed. So those are sort of the changes that we did this year. In looking at our information, we see, this is a, this next slide is a summary of all of the subtests that we've done over the past four years. We did not do the 1920 school year because we didn't do any at the last end of that year. Blast from the past a little bit there. But I think as you can see, changing this a little bit gives us more information about what our students are doing. And we actually, if we go on to the next slide, saw that we are really doing quite well in terms of our early literacy. We've also changed some of the materials that we've been using for those early learners to have more decodables and more emphasis on some of the phonics, and we're seeing it pay off this year. Just a little foreshadowing for next week, we did meet our benchmark, or our KPI benchmark for early literacy. This is the first time we've done it, so that's a huge celebration. A lot of work that our kindergarten and first grade teachers have been doing, so that's huge. We can go ahead. So the next one is the subtest performance over early numeracy. Again, we've had some changes in what we've been using with our kindergarten and first graders in math. We've used some of the Bridges program, we're making a full shift next year, but they've been doing number corner. And you can see, our students have always done well on these math assessments, but even this year, they've done significantly well. They've met all of our benchmarks across the board there. And then the last, so again, looking at our KPIs for early numeracy, another celebration. Our students did master this, so they're at 90% of our earliest learners are average or above on our early numeracy measures. So it's a huge celebration for the work that's been done in those grades.
And now I will share the NWA MAP results for the spring as well. So just as a reminder, this is a glimpse of the level of analysis that we conduct and so a lot of the slide decks are the same information in different ways. I won't speak to every single slide, I'll just give you a glimpse into each one and then provide a brief explanation, maybe with one of the first of the grade levels. Just as a reminder to the community and to the board that we are using the 2020 Norm Study. It's important to note that it is pre-pandemic data as well, so we are still looking at information that is in comparison to, you know, somewhat unaffected data as we know what COVID has done. And this is also a reminder that we conduct this assessment, fall, winter, spring, it's for our grades second through eighth in reading and mathematics. It is a RIT score, which is a RASH unit that is measured in equal interval scale and it is adaptive in the sense that there's levels of difficulty and complexity of questions based on how the students respond. Okay, so these next couple of slides is really just a visual check of, hey, how are we doing? Are we staying consistent across the board? And this is our spring reading mean RIT scores. And so visually, you can see we're staying pretty on par, big picture range. And also, this is for math. Spring mean RIT scores are the average. So for the achievement level, we will show you both reading and math at a grade level view to break it down. So these, to keep in mind, are different sets of our students. So every year, it represents a different set of second graders with their average RIT scores. And what we look for is anything beyond up or down two RIT points. And so we're pretty consistent, as you can see, in all of the grades. So here's reading and here is math. This next set is our spring 19, 20, and 21, and as Kristin mentioned, in 20, it will stay blank. The reason why we have this as a separate slide is because the subcategory of the assessment was broken down differently. It shifted next, you know, in the spring of '22. And so the next slide will show that. Moving forward, we're going to drop this data in our presentation. We still look at it, but it will not be shown or shared with all of you moving forward. So here's spring of '22, '23, and '24, and the subcategories for reading, literary text, informational text, and vocabulary. And this is math. Now this is where I'll just flip through the slides so that you can have a visual So as you noticed, visually, you can see we're looking for significant dips or raises. The one grade level that I would like to point out is seventh grade. If you saw in the spring RIT, there was an increase of about four RIT points. I believe that that's a direct result from some of the interventions that we've been applying this year. And so that's something to note. Other than that, everyone was within that range, where we have no concern as far as how our achievement is being monitored. This is a different view, it's a cohort view, so looking at the same group of students over time. And so we'll start with reading achievement. And so we'll start with reading achievement. So again, we, what we like to do is watch the journey of our second graders all the way through eighth grade. And so this was fall of 2023. Second graders and their, our current second graders and their spring. And we're looking for a general trend of an upward incline. The same is true for math achievement cohort view. So for this cohort view, the one piece that stands out is at our eighth grade level. We seem to plateau right there at the seventh and eighth grade level with this assessment. We have room to grow in the area of reading. However, there are some thoughts that we need to put into eighth grade math. So we are looking at the content of one of our courses to re, do a review and see if our standards are meeting our needs. You know, we always wonder whether the assessment has hit a ceiling with our students in seventh grade, just because they do perform a grade level higher. The other piece is rethinking this assessment for eighth grade. So one of the pieces that we know is that MAP offers an algebra, a, an algebra assessment. And this is something just to consider. We haven't really moved on it or talked about it at length. But we wonder if that will raise the bar a bit if we move to that assessment, since most of our eighth grade students take an algebra, algebra class in eighth grade. So here's the student growth view. So this is some information about growth, fall to spring. We do look at, or it's based on three different factors. It's their grade level, their starting RIT score, and the subject matter. So there's some expectation or an estimate of what their growth could be based on that information. And so we use our fall to spring data in order to measure that growth. So the, the data or our benchmarks that we really strive for is that is what is shared by Nate Johnson, who is the research scientist at NWA. Statistically, this assessment is designed so that 50% meet and 50% do not meet. And approximately, using their norm data, is about between 50 to 60% of students nationwide meet or exceed their growth projections. The other thing they point out is if you're beyond that, if 60%, and really approximately around 70%, that's, that's when it's a sign of a high performing district. And I want, I hope that you can notice some of our data with that in mind, that we do fall within the 50 to 60, but we also exceed the 60 and some actually meeting the 70 and above. So for our second grade students, this is the percent of students meeting and expecting growth fall to spring. Celebrations there for sure. Their grade. So in summary, for spring of 2024, our achievement is very comparable to previous years. Our students perform at a RIT level at least one grade level above nationally in comparison to their national peers. Our growth this year, however, in grades two through seven, our students have met or exceeded the expected growth of 50% in both reading and math. The reading growth range, the minimum being 55% to some grade levels at 68. Math growth, 55 to 73. It is our eighth grade that I think we need to, you know, reflect a little bit about. We are close. We are very close with 42% and 49% in reading and math respectively. Just to put this in comparison, this was the slide that we shared last year. So spring of 2023, we shared that there were some grade levels that met. It depended. But this year, you can see that our growth in those areas have met our expectations. Okay, so the reading and achievement status growth, that is where we take achievement and growth and overlay together. If you recall, it's, it looks like this. Right? And I always draw your attention to our blue and our green, but what we're looking for is a higher percentage in our blue and greens because that represents high growth regardless of achievement level. So high achievement or low achievement. And when we look at the high achievement and low achievement for low growth, that is the yellow and the red. So here is second grade for spring achievement status and growth. And I hope you notice that in most of our grades that we have improved in that area. Here is math achievement status and growth. Same thing across all grade levels. And again, same is true. In most of our grade levels, we have improved in those areas. Here's a little sneak peek of our key performance indicator for next Monday. We do have 50% or more of students in the high achievement category. This is an aggregate indicator. And so we're at 44 for reading. We strive for 4% or less of the students in the low achievement category, and we've met that with a 4%. In reading, we strive for 25% or more of students in the high growth category. We're at 23, getting there, right? And then 15% or less of the students in the low growth category. So we have a little bit more work to do. Just as a reminder, the key performance indicator, though, we are setting a higher bar. One of the things that you noticed in the earlier slides is what is considered high, high achievement or high, you know, or low achievement according to MAP, and they use that 50th percentile. We are defining high as 81 to 99 percentile. And that is why it's a more rigorous goal for us. We want to do better. And this key performance indicator shows our progress toward that. And here is math. For math, 55% or more of our students in the high achievement category, we're at 52. 4% or less of the students in the low achievement category, and we're at 3%. For the growth part, it's 30% or more of students in the high growth category. We're at 28. And 15% or less of students in the low growth category, we're at 15%. And we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
First of all, thank you so much information. Took me forever to go through it. I can't imagine how long it took you to prepare it, but I was just wondering about fourth grade. I do, is, do you have an explanation or can account for why it had been improved so much? I mean, I'm happy that it did, but do you think there are certain things that changed or?
100%. It's, it's really on our principals at the schools, working with their multi-tiered system of support teams, looking at data, having those, you know, conversations around practice based on the data that we have. So that full, what I believe you are seeing is the result of the system that we have put into place. That data analysis protocol, the conversations and reflections and collaborative conversations around practice. And so I believe that the data was a starting point for fourth grade teachers to talk about, hey, what's happening in your class? What's happening in our class? How can we improve? Let's analyze this and then make some changes as they move forward. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. This is, there's tons to celebrate here. I'm curious about what you talked about with the algebra assessment that you're just considering. So how, and I can see how that could be helpful. I'm wondering how you think about that with some kids who don't take algebra. Can you differentiate what assessment kids take?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can. So we have courses that are, you know, focused on the eighth grade standards, or we are shifting to that with the class that we want to reflect on. And really making sure that the students that are ready for the eighth grade standards are receiving that instruction all year long and being introduced to algebra towards the end. But majority of our students are taking the algebra class. And so we're thinking that the assessment may better align and also offer a higher ceiling of, of performance indicator.
So first, just a comment. This is really exciting. I mean, when I was taking notes over the weekend preparing, I just wrote growth, like exclamation point. It was really exciting. So I have one question, and this is not to suggest you should change how you're doing anything or that we should change our expectations. But I'm wondering if I'm understanding this right to make sure I know how to see the data. So is there a difference between expected growth and just regular growth? So like, are there kids who don't, who are growing, but they're just not hitting that estimate of what would be expected by our district?
That's, that's spot on. So what we have is what NWA would, using those three factors, the grade level, their starting RIT, they'll estimate about, about how much they expect students to grow, but are the actual growth, the observed growth is the way, you know, is what they're called on the reports are different. And so we may have students that have not met their expected growth, but they're one RIT away. You know, or they have far exceeded their, you know, expected growth, and they might be four RITS above their expected. So that's absolutely true. What you are, what you are being shown is some sort of measure of expected or not. If we gave you a report on a different, you know, which we look at with the observed growth, it would look very different.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. And again, I think it's great to see really strong growth in so many different areas. And in particular, I love seeing the early literacy growth and progress we've made there. I think, yeah, that's wonderful for that foundation. And, you know, grade eight, I just, yeah. It, it just seems that it's not this year. It's not last year. We're now seeing, you know, a few years in a row where we're not at the levels that we would like to be at a district. And so I'm encouraged to hear that, you know, we're looking at the course content, that we're thinking about the assessment. And that's for math. I look forward to hearing about, you know, what we'll be doing with reading and, and just, you know, actively discussing that as a board going forward because when I go through this material, it is definitely the one slide that stands out in terms of, you know, we've just been around in those low 40s for a few years now. And I, I think we should, you know, just commit to really seeing some improvement.
Yes, yeah. So, you know, the one thing
And it sounds like we are, but I just, I would like to continue to, to talk about that.
Absolutely. So we are doing, we are conducting a kindergarten through eighth grade reading, writing review, ELA review next year. And so that will be part of the reflective process as far as instruction and what are the areas that we need to improve on. The assessment is another one. Really looking at data, you know, with our, with our teachers and trying to understand what's happening within the classroom. The other factor that I know that the teachers feel very strongly is towards the end of spring and when you have eighth graders who are about to, you know, in their last month, I think they will weigh in that their attitude toward an assessment. You know, and taking of one might be different at an eighth grade level than, you know, maybe high school, right? So that's one of the things that we'll tackle as well. But you're right. So what we're hopeful is that this progress for with our students kindergarten and up will also make an impact in eighth grade.
I know I've mentioned this before, and there's nothing really to be discussed or anything about it, but I just feel as a board, we're, you know, setting these very lofty and exciting and challenging goals. And we're already in a very high performing district and kids who feel a lot of pressure and teachers who therefore feel a lot of pressure and parents who do. And I'm just cognizant of, you know, the never enough mentality. And so balancing, of course, we're in schools. We, we're in the business of learning and progress, but I know we all have kids who, who care a lot about these tests, sometimes more than I wish they did. And so just wrestling with, yeah, we want to set high goals and we want to see the growth, but also I don't know, just balancing that. I feel really, you know, we're setting these goals. And so I feel a great level of responsibility for what we're putting on these young kids. And I don't have a recommendation because of course we want them to learn and grow, but I'm just putting it out there because I think it's heavy.
And I just, I agree. And I sometimes, and this is just personally, I think, trying to, you know, better understand what these goals should be because when we're saying that, you know, 50 to 60% is a national norm. I, I, in this district, feel like, you know, we, we should really be doing everything we could to be at a national norm level, if not exceeding that. And maybe that is putting, you know, too much. I, I understand we need to balance that. But I, I do believe that that should be a goal for us to hit those norms, if not exceed. And then in terms of eighth grade, you know, it, it just looks different than the other grades. And so I, again, just want to bring that up is just to make sure that we're focusing on it and talking about it going forward. I mean, there is just so much success in here. And I, again, think it's incredible and so much improvement, so much growth, but I just don't want to, you know, not focus on the areas that are showing a little bit more room for opportunity.
I just have one other comment and sort of pigging back in on, on you, Amy. And that is that I really appreciate just from a kid perspective, the focus by teachers and staff on the growth part as opposed to the actual achievement. Because I know that a lot of kids, at least in my house, come home and talk about their scores and all this kind of stuff. But they have lately, I think, in the last couple of years, been really talking about their growth and how they have a, a class party because their, their room had the highest growth or whatever. And I really think that that's a great way to present it to the kids because everyone, you know, can aim for that goal. So I just, I, I really appreciate that.
I know you don't need a comment, but I wanted to point out that's been one of our priorities is goal setting. And so I'm glad that it's translating to home and
It is really hitting at our
Oh, good. That's wonderful. Yes.
To understand the, the data, like, I think it is confusing. So 50 the growth, if you're already a year ahead, right? Like if we're Like if we're one RIT above national norms and the 50th percentile nationally is for the growth, I just wonder if it's harder to grow if you're already that far ahead?
It is more challenging. But I think the expected growth is based on the grade level and the RIT score of that child in the grade level. So whether they're performing achievement wise at a higher grade, they still look at, okay, all other second graders, let's say, who started this RIT score, this is their expected growth. So it's a combination of calculations. But it's still a good, it's a great indicator of how well our students are doing.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
We, we will move on then to the social emotional learning assessment report. Again, end of the year, so we've got a lot to summarize and celebrate and share. Kelly Jackson?
Hi, everybody. Every year, we share the results from the assessment of our social emotional competency assessments with the board and the community. And this report will review once again the three assessments currently in use from our fall to spring, positive changes as well as areas of improvement. Just as a review, we do use three assessment tools. At K4, we have the DESA, which stands for DeVro Student Strengths Assessment. That's a teacher completed assessment, like an eight question survey. Cell Web, which is used at K4, that is a student completed survey. It's really actually more of an engaging assessment to assess their competency level. And the MESH at 5'8", which is from Panorama, that stands for Mindsets, Essentials, Skills and Habits. There are two portions of the MESH. One is their social emotional competencies. And then the second is more geared toward school climate. So first, we'll take a look at the DESA. This is the K4 Teacher Completed Assessment. So this, these were the fall assessment scores. Taking a look at this when we get these in the fall, we then look at those students in the Need for Instruction category. The teachers complete a longer survey if the students who are falling in there meet that threshold. And so that longer survey will give more targeted information about the specific competency areas. And that, that information is used in a problem solving meeting, maybe to highlight some lessons or some ways that they can target some skill work. And so that's done throughout the, the year. And then in our spring assessment, you can see 41% of students fall in the strength category. So that's an increase of 7% from the fall. 55% fall in the typical range, which is a decrease, but presumably those students move to the strength category. And then the percent having need for instruction continued at 3%. These results improved from last year, which only saw a 4% increase in the strength category. Thinking about the DESA, our SEL committee has talked a lot about the DESA and the usefulness of the data because it is a teacher completed assessment. It's one of those things where teachers go, okay, yeah, this is what I'm seeing in the classroom. It's more confirming than really actionable. And so I think the, the Cell Web is giving us more actionable data. And our committee is recommending that we discontinue the use of the DESA in the fall because it's just more of a checklist item than anything really useful for our purposes with problem solving for students. So we're going to move forward with that. So this will be the final DESA report. Next, I'll talk about Cell Web. There are two Cell webs that we give. Cell Web EE is for kindergartens through third graders and LE is for fourth graders. The EE is more of a narrated assessment where there's situations and students are given faces to look at for emotion recognition and so on and so forth. And then the LE is more, a little bit less narrated, a little bit more text, where the students can actually read the situations and respond in that way. The EE assessment measures social emotional competency development in four areas, emotion recognition, social perspective taking, social problem solving and self-control. And the LE for fourth graders measures development in understanding others, social problem solving, self-control and self-awareness. And the results are divided into four performance levels, above average, average, below average and well below average. So taking a look, these are the results from the fall. And again, these results are primarily used to identify trends at the classroom level. Teachers get a breakdown of their classroom results so they can target instruction for the groups. They can also be talked about at a grade level or even at a whole school level. But we can also disaggregate the data by individual students. So in one of these areas, if we have a student that based on observations might be showing some concerns in these areas, then we can look at this as one of the components that might be used to put together an intervention plan for a student. And intervention plans may be having a special win small group that's dedicated to targeting skills in emotion recognition or in, you know, taking other people's perspectives, what have you. Or it may be a more intense intervention, such as time with a social worker in a small group or just one-on-one time that's based on the student. So these are our spring results. And you can see, again, how the percentage of students in the average or above average in the overall category increased from the fall to the spring from 91% to 93%. And the overall category is the one on the far left. We combined the two lightest greens. Those are where we're targeting kids to fall. So that's the average or above average area. 7% fell in the below average category and 1% fell in the well below average. So that's the darkest green color there. The other four columns break down the individual competency areas. And our SEL committee really felt that we recommended targeting for our KPI work. Previously, our KPI was to gather baseline data. So we targeted some goals in the areas of emotion recognition and social perspective taking for this year and for the years to come. So really looking at those next two columns, so the second and third column overall. And I'll highlight that on the next couple of slides for you. So the first area that we, or the first KPI, if you will, or our measure that we created was over the course of the year, the total percentage in the above average and average categories will increase by 5% for both emotion recognition and social perspective taking on the EE. So here's the fall. And here's the spring. And so you can see that we, you can't see, but that we increased that by 6% and we were able to meet that goal. So we went from 84% to 90% of positive responses in the area of emotion recognition. And that's actually really good news for us at the kindergarten through third grade level. We're doing a lot of work on recognizing the emotions, recognizing your own emotions. So we know that the lessons that we're doing in class are hopefully targeting that area and, and showing improvement there. For social perspective taking, the, the average increased 3% from 88 to 91%. So although we didn't meet our target, we know that those are really high numbers and we are still growing in that area. And so we'll continue to target some of our lessons. This is the first look at this as well as, you know, the second year of our curriculum. So we can start to target some lessons in the social perspective taking area and hopefully increase. The LE is our assessment for fourth graders. And so these were our fall scores. And then in the spring, the overall average and above average categories in, in, so that far left column, it increased from 95 to 97%. Again, we combined those two lightest greens to get that number. 2% fell below average and 1% fell in the well below average. So, and the 2% in the, the below average was a decrease of 2%. So that, those kids moved up. When we met with our SEL web consultants early in the year, and I also attended a session at the KESL conference where we were sharing some data, they were like, whoa, these are awesome scores. And that was just based on fall data. So I think it, they were really impressed with the level of social emotional competency of our students and what we met. And so even the slightest growth is a celebration here. So we'll take a look again at those two categories of focus based on the recommendations of our SEL committee. The first area is called Understanding Others. It's similar to emotion recognition. It's just a little bit more advanced for our fourth graders. And then the second area is social problem solving. Again, very similar to the social perspective taking at our younger grade levels. So in looking at this, we were expecting to increase by 5% on both. Here's the Understanding Others category. It increased from 94 to 96%, 2%. So we didn't meet that 5%, but if we had met, that would be 99%, which is a pretty lofty goal, so near impossible to meet. So we're pretty proud of that 2% there. And then in social problem solving, the above, the average and above average categories decreased from 90 to, or 91 to 90%. So we went down 1%. Again, that, you know, I'm thinking about Katie's presentation earlier. It's not a huge percentage shift there. But we will still look for some ways that we can continue to highlight some social problem solving lessons for our fourth graders in the coming year. All right, MESH is what we give to our fifth through eighth graders. It has two components, social emotional competencies and student environment supports. The results from the MESH help us to understand more about our middle school and junior high students' development in social emotional learning as well as give us insights into their feelings of support and belonging as related to school climate. Areas targeted in the student competency questionnaire include supportive relationships, self-management, social awareness, positive feelings, challenging feelings, emotion, and emotion regulation. In sixth through eighth grade, social perspective taking is also added. In the student supports and environment category, part of the questionnaire, they include school safety, sense of belonging, school climate and valuing of school. So here, it's broken up. The, the MESH has like a third through fifth grade realm and a sixth through eighth grade realm. So our fifth graders are reported separately from our sixth through eighth graders. But these are the fall scores for fifth graders. They demonstrate strengths in the fall. We can see that. And similar to Cell Web, we look at trends across the grade level. We can break it down by classrooms. And we can also disaggregate by student at the student level. And we can use this as an element for problem solving, for social emotional learning and skill development. As we move to the spring, we can see that fifth graders continue to demonstrate strengths in all areas based on comparison to all grade levels at, or to middle school levels at the national level. When we look at the percent of fifth grade, fifth graders who responded favorably to questions in these categories, we see that from fall to spring, students stayed at the same level of positive responses in supportive relationships and increased in the area of challenging feelings. We, we want to note that while the positive responses in the other categories fell, we are still at the 80th or 90th percentile when compared with middle schools nationally. So that middle school mentality comes and plays in a little bit. And so scores, we see scores tend to drop over the course of the year in all of these. We look forward to using our SEL curriculum Wayfinder next year. And we'll talk about that next week when we talk about our work that we've done as our action step this year. But that was piloted. And so we can focus lessons as we scale it up next year to target some of these positive feeling areas as well as social awareness, which were our two largest decreases. Just, so for a little background, positive feelings ask questions such as during the past week, how often did you feel excited, happy, loved and safe? And students can choose from five responses, almost always, frequently, sometimes, once in a while and almost never. On some of the questions, sometimes it's scored as positive and on others, it's scored as a negative. And so the, on the question about feeling safe, so how, during the past week, how often did you feel safe? The only positively scored category is almost always. So even if a student answered frequently, that's scored as negative. So a little bit of perspective on how those are scored is helpful. Social awareness asks students to think about the past 30 days. So fifth graders thinking about the past 30 days. Again, that's a little bit of a lofty ask for them. They're really in the here and now. So they describe how carefully they listen to others' viewpoints, how much they cared for others' feelings or how respectful they were of others' feelings when they disagreed. And so again, those are, you know, sometimes, most of the time, or frequently in, in, they've, a lot of the students, as you go through and look at those individual questions, there's a lot of sometimes in there. And I think that's just typical of our fifth graders. But I think that that plays into when we're looking at targeting certain areas. Is it realistic for a, a fifth grader to have that, care about others' feelings 100% of the time over the past 30 days? When my child was in fifth grade, that was not typical. Anyway, so that's just a little bit of perspective. We'll see some similar things on our sixth through eighth grade competencies. So these are the fall scores. Again, those were strengths in the fall across the board in social emotional competencies. And here we see a similar breakdown. There was no change in supportive relationships there. And we see that from fall to spring, there were some decreases in other categories. We want to note that while the positive responses in the other categories fell, we are still at the 80th or 90th percentile when compared to other middle schools. So again, that trend that we have seen from year over year stays the same. And we are still continuing with our Wayfinder implementation at sixth through eighth grade as well. One area that I want to highlight here is the social perspective taking area. It is an addition for sixth through eighth grade. The questions in here are really interesting and really are focused more on students and how they read their teachers. So a question like, how hard do you try to understand your teacher's point of view during class? How hard do you try to understand what your teachers are feeling? And how much effort have you put into trying to figure out what your teacher's goals are? Those are some of the questions in social perspective taking. Now, and, and Dr. Kremis Gole, he's going to present on the CSCI a little bit later. But some of the questions in the CSCI are more appropriate for social perspective taking purposes in a more global level. So we will be looking at doing a crosswalk between some of those things and maybe eliminating some of the questions here. So we're not doubly asking and getting kind of wonky results from that. I'm going to take a look now at the, the more school climate driven area. This is the school supports and environment. We use results from this area to identify trends again in areas for growth. We can look at student responses in here as well. There are four categories, school safety, sense of belonging, school climate and valuing of school. And so as we look at this, we see that, again, we have drops in all the categories. School climate is at 60% nationally as compared with other middle schools. And that, those questions include like, how positive or negative is the energy of the school? How fair or unfair are the rules? And again, here, students responded with neither positive or negative or neither fair or unfair. We had a lot of percentages in there. So that plays into that 12% or the, yeah, the 12% change, the 12-point change. How much does the behavior of other students help or hurt your learning was a big one in there. 36% of students replied positively that it helps a little or some are, in, some or a lot. But on this question, 42% of students said that it neither helps nor harms their learning. So that's a big chunk that plays into that drop as well. Again, students, or again, for these results, we want to do a crosswalk with CSCI. They have areas, and I'll show you in a minute, but, such as sense of belonging and school safety that are asked on that. So we might want to look at all of the questions here and do a crosswalk with that and see if there's opportunities to improve what we're asking our students. if there's opportunities to improve what we're asking our students. This was the, the goal that our SEL committee suggested. Over the course of the year, the percentage of positive responses will increase from seventy-five to seventy-eight percent for fifth grade students. It dropped two percent in sense of belonging. But it is important to note that we are still at the ninety-ninth percentile when compared with middle school students nationally. So while it looks like, you know, that's not a great number, we, we are still really high up there for that sense of belonging. And so we'll continue to focus on that with our lessons, but we also want to, also want to continue some of the building things that we know have been effective this year, such of, such as our clubs and activities on a school-based level. And then we looked also at the category of valuing of school. That dropped by seven percent, which is quite a big drop there. And, but the sixty percent is still at the eightieth percentile when compared with middle schools nationally. So again, that's pretty high up there, but we want to continue to target that area. Interestingly, on the questions in this category, ninety percent of students answered positively that it was important for them to do well at school. And seventy-five percent of students answered positively that they think their school will be useful in the future. So that's, those are good numbers there. And the areas with lower positive responses were in the question of how often they use ideas from school and daily life, and then how interesting they find they are learning, the learning they are doing in school. So sixth through eighth grade, you'll see a similar trend from fall to spring. Maybe not as high of drops there, but this slide shows the, the mesh results for student supports and environment in the spring. While it decreased by four points, school safety is still at the ninety-ninth percentile compared with other middle schools nationally. School climate is at the fiftieth. So that is something that we want to take a look at. The questions in there are about the positive or negative energy of the school and the rules. Again, CSCI has some of the similar questions, so we'll, we'll look at a crosswalk there. And then we value, or we zeroed in on sense of belonging and valuing of school, and you'll see that on our next slide. Sense of belonging had no change from fall to spring. It is at the ninetieth percentile when compared with middle school students nationally. So fifty-seven percent is pretty on par with our middle school feelings with a sense of belonging. Our new curriculum specifically for sixth through eighth grade is focused on sense of belonging and building those feelings throughout that experience. And so we are excited to see, once we scale it up next year, if that affects any changes And then finally, we dropped from sixty-one to fifty-six percent at, for valuing of school. This is at the fiftieth percentile when compared with middle schools nationally. But similar to the fifth grades, eighty-four percent of students said that it was important for them to do well in school. And sixty-nine percent answered positively that they think school will be useful in the future. So we still have some very high numbers there in those areas, but they were lower in the ideas of school and daily life, how interesting they find what they're learning. And then there's an additional category about how they see some, how they see themselves as someone who appreciates school. And this is taken, taken in the spring, so keep that in mind. They appreciate school and they, I'm not sure. As mentioned, and, and Dr. Kremis Goli will go into more detail here on these areas, but these are the five dimensions for school climate as highlighted by the CSCI. So safety, teaching and learning, interpersonal relationships, institutional environment, and leadership and efficacy. As we crosswalk some of those areas, we see school, questions about rules and norms, sense of emotional security, support for academic learning, school connectedness, and peer and teacher relationships that really are similar to what is in the mesh. So our committee will be tasked with looking at the value of the mesh versus the information that we receive from the CSCI and how we might be more efficient in what we're asking of students. I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't have any questions, but I'll just say thank you. I think it's, again, an incredible amount of work, and I think it's been very exciting to be able to review the results and all of the work that you guys have done based on these results and putting it into context and putting all of the plans in place across the schools. You know, similar to what Allison said with the academic goal setting and growth and hearing the kids talk about it, I definitely hear a lot of this SEL coming through at, at home and outside of the classroom and, which just goes to show all of the work that's being done and the fact that it is resonating with the kids. They're hearing it, they're understanding it, and importantly, hopefully that is helping at school, but I also see it playing out outside of school, which is great. So, thank you.
I would, I find it so helpful to hear the national average. And so I don't know how many people look at this report beyond those who are at this meeting, and I don't even know if it would be possible, but for that, I wonder if that could be on those forms, because I think that's a very different, you know, you might see sixtieth percentile and worry, but then when you hear, oh, that's the ninety-ninth percentile nationally, it gives really good perspective.
For sure. And I think we can include that.
Yeah. It's powerful. Thank you.
We can do that.
I have a quick question. And I also agree with Amy that, that's a great point is, is to include that, that national average. So with the, with your SEL numbers, like the overall SEL, is that number an average of the four specific ones that were to the right of that overall? Because I, I was having some, maybe I'm reading incorrectly, but some of them didn't seem like they were the average. You know, when you look at the numbers, like I kept trying to think, like, like how, how are those being calculated?
Yeah. It's a, it's a combination of the four, but I can look into the, the exact calculation on that and get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this. I think you did a great job of putting everything in context, and that was super helpful. And I, I just think, you know, to quote the two of you from things you said earlier in this meeting. Katie, you talked earlier about the system we have in place, or we have put into place. Like, I trust that system. And Kelly, you talked about how we're still growing and you referred to like the clubs and stuff. I mean, I think, you know, we worry about all the kids being okay. Middle, middle school, I think, is particularly vulnerable, and I have no doubt that you're doing what you need to, to make everybody to be as okay as possible. And I think about sort of the world according to Aaron, so bear with me. But, you know, it's not lost on me that we piggybacked the achievement and growth section of our meeting with the SEL section, and I think it ties together what people have already said in the meeting and what Amy said earlier about this idea of you're never enough. And so like, in the world according to Aaron, you want to set lofty goals and you want the kids to grow as much as they can. And if they're being taught competencies for their social emotional learning on how to see themselves and how to put things into perspective and to take a, you know, a wider view or just, you know, coping strategies if they're stressed or anxious, and, you know, what they get told at home about, you know, being loved regardless. And so I think that, for me, is how these things kind of come together and are married, is we don't lower the expectations, is we teach the kids that they have value regardless. And I think that that's what's happening, and so I'm just very grateful for, for all of that.
I was a little surprised with different things. I mean, everything is done in terms of conditions. Us, we felt the same way. So those are some things that we need to spend some additional time really digging into. And it may be something from fall to spring. Maybe that's a typical trend that we see in middle schoolers. We just need to study it a little bit further, I think, because I think you're right. There's, there's some significant progress that we're making in that regard. When we look at the CSCI data, we see something slightly different, but we really want to look at these data and try to understand it a little bit better. What are, what are our students telling us? What do they need and how can we better support them?
There's one more question. And maybe, see a question, but even a question of like, I mean, like, what about, where was that and how do we do on it?
That question is really, I believe that is in that sense of belonging area. It, I think it's worded differently. And so I think you're going to find more of that in the CSCI where students are specifically asked. I have an adult that I can go to in my school. The, the questions in the sense of belonging area are more geared toward, my teachers understand, or I feel like people understand me as a person. And so it's a little bit worded differently, and so I think it's probably more geared toward that in the CSCI questions.
Well, speaking of CSCI, then, we'll move on to that presentation. And in the interest of sharing responsibility, I will give this presentation and Kelly will jump in to help. If I can share my screen here quickly, let's see how successful I am at that. Okay, perfect. So the board will remember that we have a joint committee on culture and climate that has launched this year, and that committee has spent really the entire year working with the National School Climate Center to look at how we can better investigate and intervene with our school climate district-wide and at each one of our schools. And one of the steps we took this year is to switch our survey tool from Five Essentials, which is what the state otherwise is, is kind of the default survey tool. We've used Five Essentials as a result for the last several years. And we were just finding that we wanted some additional information, some more in-depth information. So we switched to the CSCI. We gave that survey for the first time just a couple of months ago now. Students had the chance to take it, all staff had the chance to take it, and then our families as well. And so we are here today just to, to share an update on the data. We've had a little bit of time. We just received these data not too long ago, so we've had a little bit of time to dig in, both at the district level and at the school level. And so we just, we wanted to share these results with the board and the community and talk a little bit about some of our next steps. So again, this is the Comprehensive School Climate Inventory. We share here a little bit about what school climate is, really refers to the quality of school life as it relates to the norms and values, interpersonal relations, and social interactions, and then the organizational processes and structures. It really kind of sets the tone for learning and teaching done within the school environment and is predictive of students' ability to learn and develop in healthy ways. So it's a really important aspect of our schools, and, and we're proud to have a team really digging into this work and looking at ways to continue to improve. The CSCI measures school climate in ways that are somewhat similar to Five Essentials, so there's some comparison that can be made. But we find the questions to be a little more targeted, a little easier for us to understand for both our students and our staff, as well as our families to respond. The CSCI was developed by the National School Climate Center, and we've been working with them throughout this year as a joint leadership team to learn more about school climate and the ways in which we can affect positive change. There are fourteen dimensions, so I'm going to walk through each of the major categories and share just a little bit about each of those dimensions and how we scored. Overall, we did quite well. Our overall district score is four point one. You'll see in the box below, that score is greater than three point five, represent positive perceptions overall. Scores between two and a half and three and a half are considered neutral, and then scores lower than two point five are considered negative with regard to school climate. You can see that overall, in each of the domains that are highlighted, the district performed quite well and in that positive perceptions range overall. So we're really proud of that. Those are really positive results. As we dig into our school data, and I should mention, the school reports are also attached or will be attached to the board documents so that the public can view those as well. The online tools aren't quite as easy to navigate on the CSCI as they are on the Five Essentials, and so we want to make sure that the school data are available to those who might be interested. Our school teams have taken the chance, the opportunity to dig into those data and to identify some strengths as well as some opportunities, but we wanted to make available those data for everyone to view as well. So the, I'm reviewing the district data, but the school data will be available as well on the board docs. How to read the scores? As I scroll through, what you'll see is the dimension score. So when we talked about that overall score, that's the dimension score. Here in this example, the students are, for example, four point one. And then really for us, because so many of our scores fall in that positive range, we took the time to really dig into the spread, which means how positive are students and staff and families reporting and where are they in, in what they're responding to? So we can do that both on the dimension level, and then we can actually, within the system, dig into individual questions and see where we're performing either more strongly or less strongly and, and start to identify some strengths and opportunities there. So the first domain is safety. Here we're looking at rules and norms, sense of physical security, sense of social emotional security, and online safety. And here again, you'll see that much of what Kelly Jackson was just talking about is also referred to here. And here again, we're asking students, families, and staff members, teachers and staff as well, to respond to some questions that will give us some information about each of these categories. So when we look at how well we performed, you can see that overall, again, we're in the positive range for all of these areas. There's a couple of things that we noted in terms of the spread. Rules and norms is something that we're continuing to work on. Overall, it looks like there's some positive ratings, but we're recognizing that, that we could continue to work in that area. And you'll see at the end of the presentation, I'll, I'll share a little bit about some of the opportunities that we've identified as a district as we start to look forward to next year. Sense of physical security is an area of significant strength for our district. I will note that I think our district has done a lot in this area, not only in terms of the physical buildings, but also in, in terms of our procedures and our protocols for when there is a crisis or a potential crisis. It's noteworthy here that the spread in each of those areas for student, staff, and families all fall in the one hundred percent positive range. And so I think that's, that's definitely a celebration and much thanks to a lot of good work that's been done. Sense of social emotional security is also an area of strength, but continues to be an area that we want to grow. We're not seeing those fours there, and, and when we look at the spread, we're seeing some positive and some a little more neutral, and so we want to continue to work in that area. And online safety is something that each of our school teams and our administrative team spent a little more time digging into. One of the things that we noticed is that our students and staff tend to rate this area a little higher than our families. And we're not sure if that's because when students and staff are responding, they're thinking about what's happening in school, and our parents' perspective might be a little more about what's happening outside of school, on social media and in those domains that we don't have quite as much control over. And so we thought that that was something interesting, and we'll spend some more time thinking about that as well. The next domain is teaching and learning. We're looking here at support for academic learning as well as for social and emotional learning, and we're pretty proud of the results that we received here. Overall, a hundred percent of positive ratings. And again, we're seeing that our students and staff, those who are in our buildings and know what's happening each and every day, tend to rate this a little bit higher than what some of our families are rating. I should note that for our families, the response rate was a little bit lower than it is for our students and our staff. And so that's another thing that we want to look at to try and make sure that we're capturing as much family response as possible. The next domain is interpersonal relationships. Here we're looking at respect for diversity, at teacher-student relationships, and at peer relationships. And we know that each of these areas has been a, a significant area of focus for us with our strategic plan right now and much of the work that we're doing. Here again, we're seeing really positive scores overall. As we look overall, things look really, really positive, and so we're very proud of that. But our school teams really think this is an important area to focus on, and so each of them, as well as our district joint leadership team, really dug into where are there some differences that we're noticing and where can we continue to grow? differences that we're noticing and where can we continue to grow in these areas? Again, really important areas. We are quite proud of, of what we're, we're seeing here. One thing that I'll note is under teacher-student relationships, both our students and our staff responded favorably to this. Our families did as well, but we noticed a couple of instances where families were a little less positive and, and we're curious if that is, again, a reflection of families not always being fully informed of what's happening at the school or maybe hearing tidbits, but not the full perspective of what's happening at our school. So we're recognizing there's some communication needs here that we can continue to strengthen as well. In the next domain, we're looking at institutional environment. Here, school connectedness. So again, you're seeing some of that crossover, that crosswalk that could be helpful that Kelly Jackson was talking about in relation to the CSCI. Physical surroundings and social inclusion. And here, social inclusion really measures the perceptions of, about students with disabilities being full members of our school community. So a little bit different than what maybe we think of generally when we think about social inclusion. And again, overall, this was an area of strength, and, and here what we're finding is that our students, staff, and families are reporting similar results, overall very positive results in terms of our institutional environment overall. It's interesting to look at school connectedness here being rated as a significant area of strength. And in, in some of the individual scores that Kelly was just reporting on, that's an area that we want to continue to grow in. So some, some differences in that crosswalk will be really, will be helpful. Again, physical surroundings is an area of strength, and I think this, the social inclusion, especially when you think about the definition of what this tool is really targeting with this assessment, I think this is a, a strong reflection of our district stance on inclusion for students with disabilities. And then finally, leadership and efficacy, and for much of our administrative team, this was an important area for us to dig into. The five essentials sometimes gave us some mixed information here, and it was hard for us to decipher where we needed to grow, where we were experiencing some strengths. And so on this measure, it's been helpful for us to, to do some comparison between the five essentials and what we're seeing here. So we're looking at administration and leadership, and then collective efficacy. And collective efficacy is something that's really important, again, especially in light of our current strategic plan, goals, and action steps. This dimension measures perceptions about attitudes and relationships among our school staff that support effectively working and learning together. So again, thinking about some of those systems that we've put in place, thinking about our school climate overall in that sense of we are all in this together, we are all working as a team to support our success, and, and a sense of pride in the success that we're experiencing. And again, this measure is only for staff, so it isn't given to our students and families. But overall favorable ratings here, we recognize that as we look across the district and we look at from school to school and from staff group to staff group, we're seeing some differences in that collective efficacy, and those, those are some areas that we want to continue to explore and grow in. So here's some celebrations. These were identified, each school team had the chance to dig into their data, and then as our joint leadership team got together, those are representatives from each school team and in each group. And so we aggregated those results and really came up with some celebrations. And then on the next side slide, excuse me, you'll see some opportunities for continued growth. As I mentioned, under safety, physical surroundings and sense of safety really was emphasized by all groups as a significant area of strength. Teaching and learning across the board, skill development and academic and SEL was seen as a strength. Student and staff feeling supported with their academics and with SEL. And then those teacher and student relationships really are strengths for us. In interpersonal relationships, I mentioned before, the social inclusion and, and respect for diversity, we recognize that those are important areas for us. We're continuing to try and grow in those areas. This tool targets some aspects of that, of how individual people are feeling, but we recognize that there are, are some, some people who are in groups that might be less representative within our community, and their experiences might be a little different than what is evident here. So we recognize it as a strength and a celebration, but we want to continue to make sure that each and every person feels that sense of respect within our community. Our kids report feeling known and supported by their teachers, certainly something that we're aiming for in every way. And students have trusted adults at school. So this is getting at that question that was just asked about students reporting that they have someone that they can go to while they're at school. Institutional environment, students, school connections. Our students on this measure really report that they have friends at school and positive peer-to-peer relationships. That's something that we really target, and as we think about those groups and we think about how we have built some more of those connections, I think that's coming through in this, this survey quite strongly. And then our leadership and efficacy, we're, we're having some feelings of pride regarding our collective accomplishments, and this again was emphasized by each and every group. And so we're really proud of that. Our joint leadership team really felt a sense of pride in these results and wanted us to celebrate those. In terms of some opportunities, there's always opportunities to grow. Safety, we really recognized across a couple of different areas that empowering our students to be upstanders, that's something that we focused on, but we want to continue to grow that so that our students feel confident and comfortable standing up when a, when a peer or when something is happening in their environment that they're not comfortable with. Communicating levels of behavior expectations and follow-through, this came through in our data, but also as we talked about what we thought the data were telling us. Our teachers and our administrators really talked a lot about looking at this, our restorative practices, and how that kind of lines up with or supports our progressive discipline and what that follow-through is like. So you see that under safety and communication. So how are we communicating that to families and students and staff? And then you also see it under leadership and efficacy, really trying to be clear and more intentional about how those overlap and how we see them working together to support one another. Interpersonal relationships, again, empowering students to be upstanders, and then also promoting and communicating respect for diversity, especially with our parent community. One of the things that we saw is that our, our students and our staff seem to have a sense of what we're doing with regard to respect for diversity and supporting all members of our community to have that sense of belonging within our, within our schools. But maybe we're not always communicating that well enough to our parent community so that our parent community can really understand what we value and what we're all about within our district. And so looking for additional ways to support that and help all of our parents to have a better understanding of what, what we're all about within our schools. Institutional environment, incorporating student voice and planning, we continue to hear that, continue to expand that, and then strengthening our staff feelings of connection and inclusion within our schools as well. And then finally, in leadership and efficacy, I talked about being clear and intentional about restorative practices and how that overlaps with progressive discipline. Incorporating more student and teacher voice is, is really important to the work that we're doing. And then one thing that came out here was strengthening our school vision and teacher-staff voice in formulating that. So we have expanded some of the roles and opportunities at a district level, and we want to make sure that that is coming through at a, a school level as well. So while we have our district strategic plan, we want each school to have the opportunity to kind of tailor those goals and action steps to the work that they think is most important within their school. So continuing to expand and work on that. In terms of next steps, we've listed several here. Really, it's about our school teams looking at these data and providing some feedback. We've shared today some of the celebrations and opportunities. These ideas will go then next. They, they're being shared with our district strategic advisory team, and then with our administrative team as we start to plan for our action steps for next year. So they'll be used by our admin team and our DSAT over the summer to plan for some of those overarching goals and action steps for next year. And then next year, we're hoping that each school's team, whether it's your school improvement team, your PAC, your BLC, your foundation team, or your MTSS team, there's all these different teams working at a school level, and we want to make sure that they have the opportunity, have voice in this vision of improvements. And that completes my presentation. Again, I want to remind everyone that the school data will be available on the website. I know the board has had the chance to review that already, but we'll make sure that that is available to the public as well after today's presentation. Our joint leadership team will continue to work moving forward. We've really enjoyed working with NSCC this year, but we think we're ready to kind of spread our wings and fly on our own next year with just some consultation on the survey. So we're looking forward to that opportunity as well. This is just kind of an overall summary of some of what our joint culture and climate team, leadership team have accomplished this year. Again, our membership is really representative of all of our employee groups. You see that on the left-hand side of your screen. We've done some really good professional development and learning this year. We had 10 meetings. That has been much more rigorous than what we had originally planned with maybe a quarterly meeting plus one. We ended up with 10 meetings this year, and, and everyone has been really engaged in that work, and we're appreciative of that. Our school leadership will continue to expand, and then we're looking at developing our next step. So we're really grateful for the collaborative effort and shared ownership of this work. It is not an administrative-only endeavor. It must be done in partnership with our staff, our teachers, having, having voice and agency and all of those. So happy to answer any questions or discuss these results any further. Yeah, lots of information.
Thank you for all the work. And I learned a new word, which is an upstander. I didn't know that.
Yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna read about that or learn about it, but it seems like a good thing.
Excellent. Well, and maybe that's something then you're, you're sharing with us that we could communicate better about this to our, our families, because I think it's a term that we use pretty regularly within our schools for our, our staff and our students. And so helping our families to understand that the verbiage that we're using is important as well.
Yeah.
It was a recommendation in the 2017 CRC report that someone wrote with lots of help from Diet Mountain Dew. So yes.
Can't imagine who that is.
I don't know.
It has been really, really helpful. I will say it's been a, a learning process because there's been some unique things. While, while the tool was new to us, they also switched their online platform for data presentation. So while we were learning about the survey, the team behind the scenes at their organization were trying to figure out how best to present the data. So we've had, Kelly and I've had some back and forth with their team quite a number of times, but I do think that this information is much more useful to us than the five essentials was. So we're really excited to see how, now that we know the tool and they have built out their platform a little bit more, to see how that will inform our, our work. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Dr. Heather Glowacki will give an update on some of the work that she's been leading with regard to goal three.
Thank you very much. I am the voice of our committee, but I am not the sole decision-maker. And Amy Paling was part of our committee, as well as Katie Lee and many others, but wanted to share this since you're here today, that they are part of the work as well. Two years ago, we embarked on a task force initiative. We've met seven times since January of 2023, and we've had a task force that's been comprised of students, parents, support staff, teachers, administrators, and Board of Education members. So it's been a nice group to work with, with very different lenses through which we've been tackling this work. Specifically, we were tasked with the direction to look at our practices related to attracting, hiring, and retaining employees of color, and make recommendations for where the district could improve upon our current practices. We, like I said, met seven times. We've had a lot of discussion, brainstorm topics, brainstorm ideas, but then ultimately landed in a place of recommendations. And so we have a list that I'm going to just share the highlights with you today related to the work that we will be considering moving forward. Specifically, when we're looking at the areas of attracting and hiring, we decided early on to combine those two because they seem to overlap in some similar ways. And so we wanted to take a look at how we're bringing applicants to the district, but then also what is that hiring experience? And so these are some of the recommendations that the district consider moving forward. Expanding presence at job fairs, job boards, and social media. You've probably heard me say that this has, this has changed just in the time that I've been in this role. We, we never really had to advertise for our positions, but with the teacher shortages and employee shortages, this has been an evolution over the last several years, and specifically wanting to make sure we have a presence at job fairs that might represent more diverse candidates. When we're looking at student-teachers, we want to look with an eye towards diverse backgrounds, promoting diversity of our current families. So all of the work that's being done within our school is making sure we're highlighting that for applicants that are coming forward, hoping that would be of interest to them, them as well in the work that we're doing. Continuing to look at research opportunities and training for different types of advertising that we might be able to do. Looking at our interview questions specifically and querying candidates about their specific experiences related to diversity and training that they may have had, what they'd be bringing to the table for us related to their training and experiences. This next one brought up some discussion last time we met, and the recommendation is to have a voluntary field in the application process where applicants can identify their race and ethnicity. It's all voluntary, no one's required to answer it, but it's a way for us, the committee, to be able to track our progress in attracting employees of color. The key is to not have that visible to those of us in the hiring position. So not having it be an element, but also a metric for us to be able to measure who we're attracting to the district. And then looking at cultural sensitivity training for those on the hiring committees. Looking at recommendations for retention, we really focused in on operationalizing our process for addressing either reports of or observations of racism or microaggressions. Do we have a process that is similarly followed by everyone in a supervisory or administrative position, being able to interrupt and intervene in those situations? We started a little bit of this work at the February Institute Day this year, where all the administrators worked with groups of teachers to identify and then practice ways to interrupt and stop instances of perceived racism or microaggressions. And so we have more work to do in this area, but it was a nice way to kind of launch the conversation. Again, more training for supervisors and making sure we're being consistent in how we respond, not just in the moment, but then follow-up. Making sure we highlight the DEIB priorities in District 39 with the new staff that we're hiring. And then I want to talk a little bit about affinity groups. We had a, a good, healthy discussion about this as well. This is an area that's been attempted in the past in our district with employees, trying to engage employees in different affinity groups. We haven't had as much interest. And so while we've sort of pressed pause on that, we're, we want to look at that again and see how we might be able to engage employees in affinity groups perhaps differently, maybe through the mentoring program that we already have, but maybe the mentoring matchups could be related to specific affinity groups. We have more work to do in that area, but the, the consensus of the task force was this is a powerful element if we can engage our current employees in this, in this work. We're doing, we're doing well with students. We just now need to bring it to the adults in the district. And then obviously, looking at job satisfaction, which we continue to do. We've been doing through our exit interviews when, when staff leave us, but looking at, continue to look at specific points in time for employees to determine what they may need, what might help them have a better sense of belonging to our job, job environment. Those are the highlights. We now need to consider this feedback. We're sharing it with you today for any questions or discussion items that you might have. Then the administration will take into account these recommendations and determine what those next steps will be. Similar to other reports that are received by the administration, the CRC report, we need to consider what steps we will now be able to execute going forward. Questions?
This is not a question, it's feedback, because it said ques, it said questions, question mark, yeah, okay.
You might stop sharing your screen just so everyone can see that.
Oh, so, no, I thought it was great. I thought it was thorough, thoughtful, exciting, and really important. So thank you so much for all the work you're doing on this and for Ms. Paling.
So thank you so much for all the work you're doing on this and for Ms. Paling for serving on the committee. So thank you so much. Stay the course.
I was ready to take notes.
Stay the course.
Okay. I just want to add how valuable it was to have student participation. It was remarkable and actually had major impact on what you see today. And also, if anyone were ever to wonder why this is important and you listen to student voice, you wouldn't wonder. Really incredible.
All right. You're exhausted. Thank you. All right, this would be the opportunity for the public to address the board, but seeing none, we will move on. Is there any old business? Any new business?
I'll just remind everyone about graduation this week on Wednesday. We're really excited to be hosting all of our students together this year at New Trier Campus and the new gym. So we hope that all of our board members will be able to join us at that. And as a celebration, some of us were at the New Trier High School graduation yesterday, and it's noteworthy to think that some of these students, well, these students were eighth graders back when that crazy pandemic hit, and they've now reached the pinnacle of graduating from New Trier High School with honors and all sorts of accolades, and it was just a wonderful celebration. And it just reminds me of how much our students have grown and learned over the last four or five years, and it's a celebration for our eighth graders this Wednesday and a celebration for those students who are graduating as well.
Yes, thank you. Looking forward to it. Any other new business? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel, special education, individual student matters, and collective negotiations?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel, special education, individual student matters, and collective negotiations.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
She had to go to a meeting at 10 o'clock. Yep.
Allison Papas.
Yes.
Amy Paling.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes. Motion carries. We are now adjourned to executive session, and the time is 10:06 a.m.